Do we have any public comment or communications from anybody? Okay, so we're going to do the school committee officer reorganization and subcommittee. So we're going to turn it back over to Dr. Vera.
All right, excellent. So the first thing we need to do is seek nominations for secretaries for the school committee.
It's rude.
We just executive session.
It's an executive session. It's a primary executive session. I mean occasionally you'll take notes, but for the most part it's executive session from my experience.
Okay, and then type them up? Type them up?
Yes. I type them up and then I send them over to Lauren. Lauren will put them in for us to review and then...
I can do all that.
It should be both?
I'm sorry?
It should be vice and secretary?
I don't think...
Oh, I can't do that.
I don't think so. It's a lot.
She's a vice chair.
Yeah, I don't know that there's any rule against it.
I don't think there's any rule against it, but...
All right, so secretary is basically just the exec... I did it before and I was terrible at it, but I mean if we need somebody, I can do it.
I can try it.
I'll try it. It's really just executive session, which is hopefully we don't have a lot.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's very important that we have the meeting minutes, you know, in time because that can be an issue.
Somebody else would rather do it.
The state.
Well, you should send out, Courtney, you have that form that you once gave me that was very helpful because I didn't know what I was doing when I did it and I screwed it all up. But do you have that form that you once sent out, just like basically how to do it? And I felt like that really helped a lot.
It's a good way to break in.
It's just bullet points.
Good way to break in.
Yeah, that seems like a decent subcommittee to start with.
And it's not, it's not a lot.
Okay.
No, no, it isn't. It's just a summary.
So just for the minutes, can we have a motion and then a second?
Yes. So I make a motion to nominate Monique for secretary.
So moved.
Second?
Congratulations.
All those in favor?
Oh, you and I. Aye.
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 Congratulations. Next, we have policy subcommittee. We're looking for two members. This is something that we really haven't done a lot of work on the past year or two. But something in my conversation with Courtney that we really need to start looking at some of our policies. Some of them are outdated, some of them haven't been looked at in 10 to 15 years. We're probably looking at what a lot of school districts do is they'll meet either during the day or a lot of times they'll meet the hour, hour and a half prior to school committee meeting to just roll from policy subcommittee meeting right to school committee. So this, I don't want to say it's a heavy lift, but this is something that's probably going to entail one meeting every four to six weeks throughout the course of the year at least for us to be able to get through some of the policies we need to review that we haven't looked at in a few years to make sure we're up to date and current.
I'd like to ask a question. Since we've been doing Zoom for so long, because we all may have different schedules with everybody going back to work and all that, is it possible that we could do these meetings via Zoom? Is there any reason why we could not?
There isn't a reason why we... If we did them during the day, we could do them during, we could do them via Zoom. If we did them, or if we did them like on a random Tuesday, Wednesday night, we could also do them via Zoom as well.
I don't know that we'd want to do all of them by Zoom. Because I mean, a lot of them will entail actually looking at a lot of paperwork, kind of going back and forth. And Zoom just really isn't always conducive to really kind of being at a table, looking at things, passing things around, marking things up, going back and forth. It just, you know, some of them we could definitely do.
I think also the flexibility though for us, I echo your sentiments Julie. I mean, I think you have to have a combination of both is finding that boundaries where, you know, maybe it's every third one you have to come in person and that's really where you do your table size. But the flexibility for us as, you know, we're all working moms, that I think is, you know, having that flexibility, especially since we know it's going to be a heavy lift. I would actually would say Zoom is probably have it both because you can have people both be in person as well as via Zoom if that's what people want to do. But then I would make sure you coordinate like the third meeting have to be in person because we're going to go through this and touch it and...
Yep.
And I think as you're looking at tasks, like if we're looking at, let me look at one of the policies we might have to look at here. You know, procurement procedures, we might have six different policies from different districts that we're looking at. That might be something that for that meeting, you're doing it live where you can actually look, physically touch all six meetings. And then after you establish a game plan, the next two or three meetings you can do via Zoom as you're tweaking a document, melding them together. But for that first initial meeting where you're looking at six different policies, it's easier to say, you know, we're looking at policy X. And to actually physically hold it up first during a Zoom, makes sense to do it live.
Okay, so with all that being said, I don't mind being on it. I would like to be on policy.
You would?
Yes.
Okay.
So I'm going to make a motion that we have Julie as the primary and the second would be Becky.
We actually have two members.
We have two members.
Primary, secondary. Your two members, well, first, second, however you want.
Yeah, just two members, yeah. All right.
So moved.
All those in favor?
Second.
Second, all those in favor, thank you.
Aye.
All right. Next is our budget subcommittee. And I think we met probably two or three times last year to go over the budget. And we did that as Courtney and I would do work on the budget. We were meant to say, okay, here are some parameters we're thinking of. Here are some things we're looking to do. And we would present to the budget subcommittee before we presented to the overall school committee. So we're probably looking at two to three in a normal year. We're looking at two to three meetings over the course of a year. And again, this can be a combination of that Zoom or live depending on what the nature of the meeting is about.
I'd be willing to do that.
I'm willing to stay on budget too as well. So I'd be looking for a motion from somebody.
I'll make a motion for Heather and Monique to be on budget subcommittee.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Next, we have negotiations subcommittee. This was a heavy year for negotiations.
Very unusual.
Very unusual.
Way beyond the norm.
Heather and Kelly started off and then Lisa transitioned. And it was heavy this year because we had to transition a back to school plan and then a remote plan, then a hybrid plan, then another back to school plan. We're in the middle right now of contract negotiations with the teachers association. And then soon we need to start the ones with the PARS and the ABAs. So hopefully we can get this wrapped up in the next four to six weeks. And then, yeah, and then it'll be smooth. But we do need to finish up with those contract negotiations over the next four to six weeks.
I'll gladly stay on that.
I don't have a problem staying on that one as well. Unless somebody else wants to go on to it. Okay.
No, thank you.
We will finish it.
If you want it, you have it.
We will finish it and pass it along.
Okay, so I'd be looking for a motion, please.
I move that Heather and Lisa are on the negotiations subcommittee.
Second from somebody?
Second.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next, signer for payroll warrants. Becky's looking down.
I'm looking right at you, Paul. If I'm being honest, if policy is a heavy lift this year and with co-chair, I don't, do not want to do the signatures again. It's too much to go into the office that frequently. I'm happy to be an alternate on the other committees. If it's technically possible, I'm happy to take over secretary if that's better instead. But I would rather not do those as well.
And you came in, what was it, about once a week to do the signing?
Yep, sometimes it's every other week. But...
It can be every week though too.
We did lump them together. Payroll and accounts payable.
Yeah. It doesn't have to be that way.
Right.
Certainly not, but it is easier.
When does it have to be signed? Like during the day, right?
Oh, yes.
Yeah, I can never do that.
Oh, yeah.
Becky usually came in around 7:15, 7:30, 7:45 in the morning. It was the first thing in the morning type of thing that she did.
Yeah.
It's a lot of fun, you can come into the office.
It is a way to see all the bills for school and get really...
I have to go back to my John Hancock.
But so let me, in this day and age with electronics and everything, is there a way for us to scan them and then do a digital signature?
Not, she won't accept that.
So... Could we have them where we do them at school board meetings prior to?
No, they have to be done, like we got a very short, Becky knows, very short timeframe. And even like processing payroll, we have to get that signed, you know, for processing payroll. I mean warrants, payable warrants is a little bit more flexibility. But then again, Jean has to, they gotta do the process, mail out the checks. Otherwise, everything gets all backed up at their offices if they can't process. And they can't process anything without the signatures.
Does every other school committee do this? Because I feel like Kelly had said that she knows people who bring it. Somebody said they know people who sign it at the meetings, but I don't know.
It depends on the town.
Okay.
Yeah, it depends on timing and, you know...
We've been locking out because there's always been somebody kind of at home.
I think we need to explore that, I would say, is how do we get... Because all of us are working. So trying to find a parent during the day may be challenging. And I don't want to hold up the town, you know, because we can't sign payroll. Because I'm normally on the road, so unless you are open at 6 o'clock in the morning, I don't know how it's...
And it has to be a subcommittee, it can't be like any one of us.
It needs to be an...
Well, the law states, well, the law does allow, they included payroll and payables with the new updated law to allow one signer. Actually, previously you were required to have three people sign or nothing got processed. Now, at least we have just one signature required where it used to be three.
So is it a lot of paper that's like you're looking through? I mean, is it, so is there something that is scannable? Like essentially, not right now, but is it possible something can be scanned? Is it like loads of paper?
It's loads of paper. It's a whole big packet of stuff, yeah.
So how many times do you sign in a paper, like numerous times?
The signing is not that much. Like me tonight, like you've got a handful.
It's looking at everything. Yeah.
So can we have more than two people, like all of us be on it so that...
Well, you have a signer and then they have a backup.
Well, you're probably going to need more than one backup is what I'm trying to get.
I'd have to check on the law then and find out if that's even allowed.
Can we have a proxy that's not on the committee? That's within the school somewhere?
Oh, no, 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 it has to be school committee. Oh, that I'm positive about, yeah.
Let's do this, we need obviously payroll signed for the next.
Oh, yes, I mean...
For the next.
Yeah, in fact, we have table that be signed in the morning, yeah, so...
I can do it until we get it straightened out.
So let's do this, I'll have a conversation with Greg Pagnini, a school attorney. And we can also have a conversation with Jean to see what other districts do and what some other alternatives.
Because I know, like I go over to the town for finance committee and I sign, she leaves them in the mailbox there. So I know the school's not open, but that's how the town does it.
Yeah.
So, you know, can we do it at the town where you leave it in the town, the mailbox?
There for Jean.
Yep, that's how I do it. So I mean, that might be an alternate versus, you know, you're going to have to drive over to city hall, but city hall at least is open at night and it's conducive for us. I'm just trying to find an alternate for us to make it work.
Makes sense.
So that's just, you know, because like I said, I just know that that's what I do on the town side. So if we could explore that option. I don't know how often the high school is open at night either. So maybe there's a mailbox here, you know, where we get PIN access to be able to come in because you guys have PIN access to get into the building where we could come in and sign after hours. I think that would be...
I agree. Is it once a week?
It can be once a week.
Yeah.
And no more than that?
It could be more than that, Julie.
Oh, it's very well big.
It's almost never, it's almost never.
Because I feel like even if we all like happen...
Depends on end of year, end of year it does get a little bit wonky, but I'm just...
Oh, no, but there are things that can happen. There are absolutely things that can happen.
Yeah, but I've been doing it for two years, two years now? Two years now. And it's very infrequently twice a week. It's most frequently once a week, sometimes it's every week. And it's not difficult, it's just again, like, I'm sorry. My life is changing and I'd love to be on policy subcommittee, but if that's a bigger commitment this year. And I feel like...
Yeah, Julie, it's the time, it's the time to come in, let's call it once every, three times a month to come in and look at the paperwork. The signing of the four pieces of paper, five, six, seven pieces are relatively quick. But it's going through all the backup to see, you know, when you see a bill for $75,000 with a stack of paper behind it, you go through it just to see, okay, what am I signing off on $75,000?
And I mean, you can do that, they've scanned for, I mean, if we want to take a beat before we shove, oh, no, it's not. So like if we all, if somebody was like a primary and then we had a few backups, like as in backups is we all take it maybe a week or not all, but maybe a few. Like I know you said you might explore it as an option.
I mean, if somebody needs to do it, we have to have somebody do it, so...
So I mean, like if I, and if we could get like special access to get, to cut through the back way during those hours, like at 7:00 AM, because I'm not going to sit in line for two hours while everybody gets dropped off.
It's not two hours.
To me, it, two minutes to me is two hours. You know how I am about that. But anyway, but like, so if I was dropping off my daughter at the high school, then I can potentially swing back. But if I'm bringing my kid to BBT or something like that, I could try and make it somehow work on a Friday morning. Now, I couldn't do it every Friday morning because I sometimes can't, but...
Friday, Friday morning, there's payroll done at certain times. Payables are done, have to be signed at certain times, it's...
So let's do this, not to...
Yeah, yeah, so we don't...
Not to belabor it, yes.
Yeah, we can kind of think about everything you've said and, yeah.
See how many different people we can actually have on it. And then at our next meeting, we can present a little more information to you. But in the meantime, Becky, you wouldn't mind coming in to make sure that our bills get paid for the next two weeks.
You might need to rephrase that, but I'll do it.
Please.
We will have payroll in the morning. We will have payroll in the morning.
It's not, it's not that bad. I just...
It's the flexibility.
I've been doing it for two years and it's, yeah, and I'm all done.
So we'll table that for our next meeting.
Yeah.
And the only one that I don't see on here is we needed somebody on the subcommittee for the health if they're still continuing on with the initiative that Neely was doing.
Oh, for the health and wellness?
Yes, so we need a committee or do we need two committee members or one?
One's enough.
Just one.
One.
So just to explain that, so, no, we can talk about it now. So every, every school department, every school district has to have a wellness committee established. And they look at things like your allergy policy, look at things about health and wellness, around nutrition, around physical activity, around social emotional wellbeing of kids. And part of that wellness committee, aside from having a school committee member on, the lead nurse needs to be on it, preferably members from the board of health, community members. And what you do is you probably meet, you have to meet a minimum of four times a year. And what you do is you need to look at our policies around health and wellness. So Neely started that this year, I think she had one or two meetings. And that's what I'd like to continue for next year to be able to look at some of our policies. And then whatever comes out of that committee would end up going to policy subcommittee for us to be able to look at and approve. Now, just one member.
I can do that.
Is there a motion?
I move that Monique be on the health and wellness subcommittee.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Do we have any old business that we need to discuss? Okay, and new, we're moving on to new business, anything? Okay, so we're ready for the superintendent's report.
All right, we'll start as always with our COVID update. As everyone knows, the commissioner and the governor lifted the mask mandate for masks, both for speaking in schools. Prior to Friday, adults had to wear masks outside, but kids did not. And then as of Friday now, if you're outside, you do not as an adult need to wear a mask. So in a public school setting, the only time that people need to be wearing masks is if you're inside the building. So outside, that's been lifted, same thing for sports and everything. So that was great going into graduation, being able to do that. He also issued some guidance around going into next year. I think I touched upon it last time we met. Summer school is still going to be a continuation of whatever rules are in place from this school year. And next year, we're going back to normal with the exception of still having to wear masks in schools. So no more physical distancing, no more social distancing. All the cleaning requirements, although we'll still clean, have been lifted. No more contact tracing. So all that's been lifted for next year. So unless there's something dramatic that happens, when we come back, the end of August to start the school year off, it'll look normal, but with just everyone still wearing masks. And we'll have to see what happens between now and then. We've seen a lot can happen in two and a half months. So we'll see what happens between now and then. But that's where we are with COVID update. The numbers have been fantastic. I think we were at 100 cases this, from yesterday. We're looking to get under 100 would be great. We're at a positivity rating across the Commonwealth at under 1%. So we're really, we're making the turn. So it's been exciting, exciting to see the changes.
100 cases here in Douglas?
No, 100 cases across the Commonwealth. No, not here, we didn't hit, we've never hit 100 here in Douglas.
It was like, whoa.
We were in the mid 40s once or twice, but that was it. Any questions about that? Just some stuff with senior week. Yesterday, we had our class night, which was awesome. Big thank you to the police department and the fire department who escorted the kids and the fire trucks and the police cars and motorcycles across the town. It was absolutely awesome to see. We came back over here, we had a great ceremony outside, used to happen inside, but we had it outside, everyone in the back. It was very relaxed and nice. It was a fun, fun, fun night. I had Josh just send me some information. And I think this is a testament to the community and to how giving the community is to our kids. So we had 84 graduates. Jenna Elliott is our valedictorian this year. She's going to Princeton, which is absolutely awesome. Our salutatorium is Daphne Sevilla. And she's going to be attending the New York School in New York City to study music and dance. Last night, we gave out scholarships in the amount of $45,800 to our kids. That's a lot of money in scholarships for 84 graduates. That's a very, very, and we had scholarships ranging from $200 to $300, which those of us who have kids in college pays almost for a semester's worth of books, to some scholarships going up to $5,000, which puts a substantial dent into your freshman year at school. Scholarships came from private donors, alumni, the teachers association, many community organizations and surrounding communities. So it was really awesome to be here and see that. You saw a lot of the same names coming up, but you know, you had some kids who really excelled and put a time into doing it. For people to know, you actually have to apply for a scholarship to get the scholarship. So if you don't apply, so some people, why, it was always the same names, why wasn't this person's name? A lot of kids made the choice not to apply. Josh was telling me today that there were some scholarships that actually had, you know, the opportunity to give up to five scholarships and only three or four kids applied. So then the remainder of that scholarship money went to another community. So we're trying to promote the kids to write the essays, fill out the applications and do it. So that was great. Today, we had a parade throughout the school. So the graduates went into each of the buildings and walked the halls, which was great. I saw them at the middle school, which was fun. But I'm sure the elementary school kids has always loved seeing the big kids walk the halls and say hello, and even the middle school kids liked it. So that was great to see.
My daughter actually said, she's like, we saw the graduation today. And I was like, what, isn't it tomorrow? Like what's happening? And she was like, yeah, they graduated. I was like, oh, they walked the hall. Yeah.
Yeah.
Wow, that's cute.
The graduates went up to the main room as all the kids are sitting on the sidewalk.
Yeah. Yeah, she was excited.
It was...
Well, they had their cap and gowns too. So I could see what she was...
I'm just glad that we got that tradition in our kids.
I mean, that, we made it work. I mean, that's true testament to everybody doing what they needed to do for our seniors.
And graduation's on Friday, 5:30. Forecast hours of 12 o'clock on weather.com. Talk for rain showers in the morning and potential for thunderstorms in the afternoon. I'm going fully optimistic and saying afternoon means like 12, 1 o'clock, not 4:30, 5 o'clock. So the plan that Mr. Romano has in place is if we can't do it on Friday, we'll do it on Saturday. If it can't happen on Saturday, we'll do it on Sunday. If it can't happen on Sunday, it'll be the next day at 5:30 where it's not raining and we can be outside. But we're excited for what we're going to do for our kids. And it's really great that a lot of the restrictions have been lifted, especially for outside. So people can bring family members, people can be outside. The graduates are all sitting together this year like we did pre-COVID as opposed to with their families. So it's awesome, very excited about that. Any questions about graduation or senior week activities? Right. And the last piece is just an update to everyone on my goals for the year. I think I submitted six at the start of the year, a little ambitious. But I did six goals to start the school year off and just want to give people a brief update on them. The first one was the committee to write the blueprint, our strategic plan for the next few years. And I think I presented you earlier, that's completed. Really excited about having that blueprint set up because it's really going to set that foundation and that vision of where we're going. As I said when I presented here a few months ago, someone says, why are you doing this? Or what direction are you going in? Or why are you spending money on that? Or why did you make this decision? It's all going to be tied into that blueprint and those five indicators around academic excellence, social emotional wellbeing of kids, community engagement, growth mindset and grit and determination. So really excited about that and being able to go forward with it. The next goal is around a literacy plan in grades K to 5. Being able to read and write is the foundation of everything. And when you can get kids reading and writing at an early age, it mitigates problems as they, as they grow up, go forward. We have our wonders program, which is what they use in the elementary school, which is great. And it does an excellent job teaching to the middle, but it doesn't have a lot of those ancillary resources for your struggling kiddos and your high achieving kiddos. So bringing in some more resources for classroom teachers to have to address all kids. The other thing is it's not rocket science. The more you read, the more you write, the better you get at it. So really what we're looking to do is being able to put a plan in place where we can get more books in the hands of kids and matching the book to a student's interest and the book to a student's ability level. So right now, you know, with our program, you might be reading a book and the topic might be rabbits. If you don't like animals, makes it tough. So if you're trying to drill home a concept, giving a kid a choice to pick a book, whether it's fire truck, sports, animals, family, whatever it is, to drill home a concept that they're excited about helps them learn that concept a little bit easier. So this is a work in progress. It's probably going to take two or three years to implement, but the teachers are really excited about it. We're working with a consultant that's come in. Teachers loved, she's met with them once, teachers loved her. And we're hoping to expand on that literacy program. Next is talking about those instructional practices and the high standards. This year, we've done a lot of nuts and bolts stuff, just being able to get things up and running with COVID. We've started setting the foundation for this level of expectations when it comes to teaching and learning. We did it with a blueprint with one of the standards being academic achievement and having those high standards. We did it with a literacy plan in K to 5. We did it by adding more choice in the middle school schedule, which Mr. Olson presented. We did it with Mr. Romano in adding those pathways, expanding those pathways, building them up. And next year, we added project lead the way for freshmen. So still a work in progress, which is really exciting to start having those academic conversations with principals to move things forward. My fourth goal was around the middle school schedule. Mr. Olson was here last week, really exciting stuff for kids. Again, just to recap for anyone in the community who wasn't here, the ability for that schedule to rotate. So you're not always having math on Friday last period. The ability to have the entire school on one schedule. So you can now share resources across grades six, seven and eight. More choice for kids in terms of electives, more choice for kids in terms of specials. Being able to build in an intervention block one day for kids who are struggling to either go in for a week, to go in for a month, or maybe to be there the full year. But that intervention block build in and staffed with teachers and with parent professionals. Putting music and chorus and band back into the school day to expand our program.[1796.76] Putting music and chorus and band back into the school day to expand our program. So just some great opportunities there. The fifth goal was communication. We had to do it this year. And it was just important to be transparent and keep people informed, especially going with what we had to endure this year. So just wanted to make sure, we sent out our weekly newsletters, I sent it out, we did the communication, we did the Zooms, we did the parent forums. People are like, I don't want to hear the word parent forum again. I'm like, I don't want to have to do another parent forum, but it was the way to get the communication out. And then the last piece was around the program of studies here at the high school. Like I said, Josh has done great work around that with his pathways program, which is great. And then bringing in Project Lead the Way next year, which we're really excited about that engineering pathway. Very similar to what Uxbridge has done with STEM and the engineering pathway. So we're looking to bring that here to Douglas and hopefully keep some kids in district by having them follow that engineering pathway. So he's done a lot of work on the program of studies. Some of the goals were completed, some are a work in progress, some are things that'll take two, three years. But I just wanted to have that conversation with the committee, give you the opportunity to ask questions, and know that we'll be following up on them next year.
I had a question about, in terms of the student input, like for building the classes, is that, did they, this list here, was that like?
For the middle school or for the high school?
Well, I know you had students as part of this committee. Was that right?
For the blueprint, you mean? So we had, we had two students as part of the blueprint committee. So what we did is, the process that we did for it was we conducted a SWOT analysis. We did strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats. So then we looked at, okay, what are we doing great? What do we need to work on? And we put those in three, four, five, six different buckets, and we created themes. And out of those themes, we saw a lot of stuff focusing, singing around academic achievement, a lot of stuff focusing in on the social emotional well-being of kids. Then we went to, something, it was a lot of stuff around grit and determination, stuff around being a good global citizenship, and then community engagement. So after a couple of meetings, we kind of massaged the language and came up with what you saw in that original document, which is the title with a description and an outcome. But we did have, I believe it was two students on the committee. We had a few parents, we had principals, and we had teachers from each of the buildings.
And they've kind of expressed some input in terms of like what kids would be interested in?
So they did express that. And then the process that we're going to use is over the summer as an admin team, we're going to sit down and kind of come up with two to three strategic actions under each of those committees. Then what I'm going to ask each of the principals to do is with their site councils and with their faculty, add additional resources. It's a great idea to have Josh and maybe Bob with some middle school kids talk about some input as to what they'd like to see included in some of those areas.
I'm going to say the word parent forums again. I think that they've been great this year, and I've gotten, I've just, you know, anecdotally, I've had a lot of really great feedback about the newsletters from the principals and from you. I think that people feel like communication has been clear. I would just add that communication this year has been so much about COVID, and so much about procedures and policies related to COVID that I, you know, I'm sure that I don't have to say this, but I think it would be nice to see that kind of communication continue to go forward when we're past the pandemic stuff and we can just talk about, you know, experiences here, quality of the coursework, celebrate the achievements in Douglas and that kind of thing, because people have appreciated it so far. And I think it'll be nice when we're able to change the nature of it from, you know.
I can't wait. Because I usually start typing on Wednesday. I do Wednesday, Thursday. I can't wait to not have to type about masks and numbers and percent positivity. I can't wait to do that.
Yeah.
I agree with you 100%.
I think people appreciate it.
And then sometimes I'll read it, and I'm like, COVID, 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 COVID. Like, oh, there's one little thing about education, COVID.
Right.
It's not lost on me.
No, and I mean, I think people have appreciated that too. But I think, you know, sometimes I hear people professionally saying, we don't want to send out too much information because then nobody reads it. And I get that, and that's true to a degree. But I think parents appreciate having the ability to access what's going on. So keep it up.
No, but it was very organized. And when you would read it, yeah, it was all, because I'd be like, oh, God, it's about COVID again. But you could see the breakthrough that was going through in it, because every week it was like, oh, and then let's move past COVID and let, here's some achievements and celebrations. So I think we were getting there through each of those newsletters progressively. And I think it was, it was good. So I'm sure that it will be great next year too.
But I bet everybody can recite, symptoms of COVID may include.
I think we all know the verbatim now.
And there's already so many ways you can say, as a reminder. Please don't forget. Last week I mentioned, as a reminder. So yes.
I have an abundance of questions.
Yeah, you were really only reading that first line. There's been one person or two people, like the rest of it, you just kind of don't pay attention to. But yeah, but again, Becky's right. I mean, I think you do a very good job regardless. You knew how to skip around and you knew what to find. And for lengthy things, I actually, I read them, you know, because they weren't over account.
Thank you. Any other questions on my goals? All right. I think I can't see. That is all I have tonight.
Okay, moving on to the school committee and subcommittee reports for Council table.
Okay, so I signed warrant 48, school lunch 21, which was one batch totaling $8,049.70. That was dated 5/28/21. I signed warrant 48, school year 21, dated 5/27/21, which was six batches totaling $481,425. Warrant 47, school lunch 21, dated 5/21/21, totaling, which was, I believe, one batch. Hold on. Yeah, I was looking for the batches. Yeah, one batch, $2,584.68. And warrants 47, school year 21, which was dated 5/20/21, and that totaled $24,851.59. And that one was, my apologies, six batches. Nothing unusual.
Okay, the next item is the consent agenda. Thank you, Becky. The May 19, 2021 meeting minutes, press review. I'll be looking for a motion if no one has any issues.
I'll make a motion to approve the school committee meeting minutes for May 19, 2021.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Next item is the FY 2022 non-union employee salary and salary rate schedule.
So we have before you this evening, and I want to make sure that we're looking at the right thing. So in your packet, it starts with the one that's listed as Douglas Public Schools, Central Business Office Assistance. That's the beginning of that one, because there's several pages, and we'll do them individually. So for all of the, actually, everything that we're bringing before you this evening, for the, as far as the percentage increase, I'll give you a minute to find it before I should start with that second page. Right after that. So I think the administration one is on the top, and right under that should be the beginning of the non-union. Starting with Central Business Office Assistance. So we used to have those, and I'm not sure why, it's just the way it was always done when I came here. So I actually made the change this year. Those used to actually be listed on the administration ones. So I've actually taken those out because I have the administration as being just administration and exempt, classified exempt personnel. Okay? So as I stated, we have 2% for, and I'll actually just kind of go through them all. The central and business office assistance. The next page, it is secretaries and bookkeepers and technology. Then two, as far as the 2% increase, it's just those two sheets. So we can actually approve these individually, but we do want to let you know this, these were incorporated, the 2% was incorporated in the budget as approved by the school committee. So as we do every year, we're bringing them to you, we bring them usually, you know, obviously before June 30th, only because payroll starts July 1st. But I didn't know if anyone had any questions. They listed the FY 21, which was 0% for all of these categories, and FY 22 is 2%.
This is a point of reference. Is there, if it's already in the school budget that we approved, why do we look at it again?
Oh, because you, no, because you approved the budget?
Yeah.
But you actually, school committees also approve pay rates as well.
Oh, the specific.
Yeah, that's why. A separate thing. Mm-hmm. Yeah. But during the budget process, we did incorporate it in the budget though. And all steps as well, of course.
Are we talking about the teacher substitutes here at all?
Um, right now, we're just going over the first two pages. Central Business Office Assistance and then the Secretaries, Bookkeepers, and Technology.
All right. I make a motion that we approve fiscal year 2022 proposed salary schedule administrative and district-wide positions classified exempt, school committee meeting until June 2, 2021.
Okay, and that would be for the Central Business Office Assistance and the Secretaries, Bookkeepers, and Technology categories, those two pages.
So move.
Second. All those in favor? Aye. Aye.
Okay, thank you. And now we're getting Julie to the one, so on the third page is the tutors and substitutes. And at this time, we are not recommending any increases.
Okay, so teacher substitute is the one I wanted to talk about. So the substitute teacher, so that's by day is $85, right?
Correct. That's correct.
So here's.
It's actually, just so I can explain the rate. So actually, we did make a change a couple of years ago, Julie. So yes, it's day to day, but it does increase as you go beyond six days, and then beyond 30 days, and then beyond 61 days, as far as the daily rate.
We know we need to look at the substitute teacher pay rate. And Courtney and I have had a couple of discussions. Right now, we're doing five contract negotiations. We're doing teachers, we're getting ready to do paraprofessionals and ABAs, we're doing cafeteria workers, and we're doing custodians. So I really want to finish those to see where we land before we start looking at the substitute teachers.
No, it's fair.
We'll have time to do that potentially in August, but I really want to, I want to focus in on the five contracts that we're negotiating at this time before we start diving into looking at the substitute teachers. But Courtney and I, we've gone back and forth all year on this.
Different.
And we know that, it's really tricky when you're looking at some of the paraprofessional pay, where you have a paraprofessional or an ABA who's been in the district for two or three years, and there's an opening for a long-term sub in a third grade or fourth grade classroom, and they're actually taking a pay cut to go from being a paraprofessional to a long-term sub. But we want to get the, those stipends taken care of, and those salaries and those contracts taken care of before we dive into the substitute teacher, both short-term and long-term pay scales.
Fair enough, but it's definitely something that we should look into. I mean, it's nice to have a job where you only have to work one day, and then if it doesn't work out, you don't have to come in the rest of the week. So I mean, there's an advantage to it, but at the same time, obviously.
It may.
Point well taken.
And we have a lot of our powers who would love the opportunity
Yeah.
to step into a long-term sub, whether it's a maternity substitute position. But then they look and they say, I'm taking a $3 an hour pay cut or a $25 a day pay cut to do more work. And we know that something that needs to be taken care of. Courtney and I have had this conversation since, since the fall. We also knew we had teachers, cafeteria workers, custodians, paraprofessionals, and ABAs to take care of first. I want to address that first.
Can I ask on the second part? Oh, maybe that's just because of the summer. It says teacher substitute. That's a completely different thing for summer. Is that?
Are you looking at the last page, Monique? The summer program?
Yes, the last page, it said teacher substitute, $25.
Oh, yeah, that's a whole, then we'll get to that after we do this here. Yeah, that's a whole different thing.
This is regular school year.
Yes, that's correct. Mm-hmm.
Okay, so I, I'd like to make a motion that we approve.
You just read the top of it.
What?
You can just read the top.
The secretaries, bookkeepers, nope, we already did that one. Sorry. The tutors and substitutes fiscal year 2022 proposed rate schedule, school committee meeting, June 2, 2021.
Second. All those in favor? Aye. Aye.
Okay, thank you. Now, the last one is, yes, this is for the special education summer program. So we have not changed these rates. We think the, actually, at this time, these rates are fine. We will be looking at the, all the substitute rates, again, to that point, Julie, you know, going forward. But again, we've got the par-ABA thing we're dealing with as well, coming up. So the substitute rates on this sheet will probably be addressed going forward as well. But these rates, we're looking to have in place just for this summer school program. And so these are the rates for all of the different categories that we have that teach in the, in the summer program.
Are they looking for a motion?
I move to approve the Douglas Public Schools Special Education Summer School Program, fiscal year 2022, proposed hourly rate schedule for school committee meeting, June 2, 2021.
Second. All those in favor? Aye.
Okay, thank you.
Did we finish that first page? Was that?
No, I'm doing that now.
Oh, you're doing, no, thank you.
Yep, so the next one on the agenda is the FY 22 Administration Salary Schedule. And that's a sheet entitled Administration and District-wide Positions Classified Exempt. So again, we have the, you know, shows 0% received in 2021, proposed salary 2%. There are two salary adjustments listed on here. One for the, the elementary school principal, sorry, one for the food service director. But again, this is, both of their contracts are up on June 30, 2021. So if the school committee so approves, I would like to add some language with the motion, and I can actually read that, you know, with regard to those two.
Okay.
Because we don't have signed contracts yet for either one yet, so.
I'm sorry. Explain to me again our difference between indicates a salary adjustment and just the 2% increase?
I'm sorry?
The difference between the salary adjustment.
Sure. So at the beginning of the school year, we were going through the budget, we budgeted COLA for everyone.
Yeah.
One thing that I did with Mrs. Keegan is I looked at administrative contracts that were up this year, and I looked to see where they fell, both locally and across the state in terms of their compensation. And some people were dramatically underpaid, both across the state, but also locally. So I came to the school committee maybe six weeks ago, two months ago, and asked to see if we could give a market value adjustment for those two positions going into FY 22 to make them somewhat more competitive, not at where they should be. But right now, they were in that bottom 10%. This at least puts them closer to the middle. We're never going to get to full market, it's going to be a lot of work to get to full market value for what this region is paying for principals, assistant principals, business director, technology directors. But those two market value adjustments, those individuals were, those positions, not the individuals, were dramatically underpaid. So again, it was just a small bump in market value adjustment to get them a little bit closer to the average in this area.
Okay, so then my next question, and this is just to help me understand the business side of things, because, I mean, frankly, I think you, you know, think very highly of everybody in the district, so I'm not trying to be difficult here. But just in general, when a contract is signed at a certain rate, is there typically the expectation that there's going to be the 2% increase or no?
No. So the way each of the three, the way our contracts are in, us meaning administrators and people not in the bargaining unit, is our first year is set at, the first year of your contract, your salary is X. And then the two years or the three years or the four years, depending on how long your contract is, is based off of the next year. So you sign a three-year contract, your first year, your salary could be at $100,000. Your next year, you could get a 1% increase. The next year, you could get a zero. The next year, you could get a 1.5. It's all based off of what you have available for funds in order to build your budget for each of those future years.
Okay.
So.
And the school committee approves when I bring it, you know, for each year going forward.
Right. Okay. So it's not ever based on performance across the boards? Like, you would only do 2% flat out across the boards here? You wouldn't?
So the... So the, there are some districts that do have, in administrative contracts, performance-based, a performance-based plan.
Right.
Where it can start off as low as a half a percent to three-quarters of a percent.
Right.
And I've seen them get as high as 3%, 3.5% based off of your goals, your SMART goals, and your evaluation. So it's a conversation to have.
Yeah.
But you'd have to play that out to say, okay, if historically, the district is giving out, let's say, a 1.5%,
Yeah.
and you have 10 people on your administrative team, and they get rated exemplary in every single one of their goals and indicators, which they max out at 3.5%.
Yeah.
What's the delta between a 1.5 and a 3.5, if you were going to go to a performance-based compensation plan for administrators?
No, I'm not, I'm not suggesting it either. I think I just, I think it's important for us to understand, you know, the, if money was no object in this district, then, you know, like, it wouldn't even add an "I," but it, it's an object in Douglas, so I think it's important for us to sort of understand how it works and where it's going, so.
Plus the community too, as well.
Absolutely.
Have the awareness and the oversight of how we, we look at it, too, as well.
Right.
I think, I think some people would welcome performance-based plans, because then you set your goals, you create your goals.
Right.
You work hard to accomplish them, and if you do, instead of a 1.5, you might get a 2.5% increase.
Okay.
Can I ask about the Director of Student Services?
Absolutely.
Is that something that's commonplace in, in the school?
So all school departments have, they, they vary in title, so you have to have a special education director. The next title is Student Support Services, which incorporates things like your 504 plans, which incorporates overseeing the adjustment councils, which is, that piece of student support services outside of special education. So a lot of times, they'll do Title IX, they'll do McKenna-Vento, they'll do 504s, they'll oversee the adjustment councils, they'll oversee the nurses. So it's just a difference in title. Some districts have, will have a special education director that just deals with special education, and then they might have a K-12 Director of Guidance that oversees the 504s, the 504s and the adjustment councils. And then they might have an Assistant Superintendent of Curriculum Assessment Instruction who will oversee McKenna-Vento, Title IX, and some of the other things. But in smaller districts, or it doesn't necessarily mean small, but in some districts, you'll have the Student Support Service title, which encompasses all those different roles.
So they're aligned together?
Excuse me?
Those two roles are aligned together, is that?
They are.
Okay.
Um, one of the things that probably we should note on that, though, going off of what she was just talking about, our, um, Director of Student Services, I thought there was also a, um, an additional pay incorporated into who we have right now, because she kind of was like, almost like, not an assistant superintendent, but had that.
That's part of her title.
That was her title.
That was her title.
Yeah, so I mean, is, okay, so is that part of what the salary would be going for? I mean, is that kind of going to be their title, too? Or no? Because I would think that they got paid a little bit more because of that.
So right now, our directors, so what you see here for salary for special education, um, sorry, I read sideways, Director of Student Services, that is that position's salary for FY 29. We had a salary approved for that position, assuming that the current person nearly was going to stay in the position for next year. As you know, she resigned, and she's moving on to Millis, so that position's open. So that's still, depending on who we hire, their experience, where they're coming from, we're going to adjust the salary as needed. So that's why it's still listed as TBD, because we still don't know who we're going to hire for that position.
So will it be in that, I mean, I don't know that, how much, what information we could disclose to public, or maybe we can, I don't know, but is that a salary that we're looking at to be around that range? Are we looking to be higher, or?
So we, we have.
That's not something we really have to decide now.
So what, what we're going, what we're going to do is, we actually have a few things that probably in, in our June 16th meeting, we'll have to go into executive session to talk about. In terms of, we're going to have to hire a new tech director, and we need to talk about parameters around what that salary looks like. Donna Sousa's retiring. And depending on which direction we go in for the Director of Special Education, I want to have a conversation with you about salary and salary range. We are looking, we had to repost the position, the individual we offered, we had as a finalist, as you know from my newsletter, his current employee made him an offer he couldn't refuse, so he withdrew. So we're looking at a couple of different options. We're looking at, we've reposted, and we're going to interview again for, for a full-time person. But we also need to be smart and look to make sure that if we can't get a full-time person to come in, I'm also exploring an interim for, for the school year. Just as, just to have a backup in case, when we post, if no one applies, I need to have a backup plan. So if you're going to go with an interim, we might be looking at one salary. If we go with a full-time person, we're going to be looking at another salary. But I'll have more information when we meet in mid-June in executive session.
Okay, so.
Any other questions?
Oh, can I make a motion?
Um, yeah, I'm going to read, um, read a motion. Um, so, let's see. Move to approve the FY 2022 proposed salary schedule for administration and district-wide positions classified exempt, school committee meeting June 2nd, 2021. The elementary school principal and food service director is, salary is contingent upon full approval of the contracts, which end June 30th, 2021.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Kate, thank you very much.
Thank you so much. All right. And now, we're going to talk about the trees in left field.
The meeting dates.
I saw the baseball players outside.
Meeting dates next, I'm sorry. I'm working off an old agenda. I'm sorry, Courtney, meeting dates.
I don't, I don't have them. I don't, okay. Meeting dates? Okay. I didn't, it's like, ah.
So in your package.
Yeah, okay.
Meeting dates for.
Okay, there we go.
Um, 2122 school year. We've got a meeting on July 21st, another meeting on August 17th, and going back to our typical schedule that we have, the first and third Wednesdays of every month at 7:00 PM meeting here. Hopefully, we'll go back to Room C208, where we've had, where I still have only been to for one meeting, but we'll go back to Room C208, where we have our regular meetings. So we just need you to approve our school committee dates and times for the FY 2122 school year.
And, and before you so-move, I just want to remind everyone that, you know, with regard to closing out the year, like, every year, depending on, on the timing, sometimes we have a meeting, you know, and we might change the date or have an extra meeting. That would be up to the school committee, which one you might want to do, and of course, what's going on at the time as well.
Can I make a suggestion, or is it even plausible for, you know, the summer months that we do via Zoom versus being in school? Is that plausible to have that?
I would agree with that.
So I, I, I'm just trying to think of flexibility-wise, because I know some people go on vacation, I mean, versus having to come up from where they are.
I'm actually away on August 18th.
That's my son's birthday, so.
Not that it makes a difference, but yeah, in theory, I could do.
I think we changed it to the 17th.
Did we change the 18th to the 17th?
I don't know.
I'm still gone.
So, I, I just, just to try to get the, because I'm thinking for a quorum, you need to have, what, three?
Three.
August is important, so if you know that now, you could change that date.
Yeah, so, I mean, I am not going to be here on the 18th.
Well, can we, can we actually wait? Because actually, what we do do is, we do have a little flexibility in the summertime that, um, because of closing out the books and going through that whole thing when I present in the school committee, and then there's all kinds of things to sign that have to be posted, and everything just gets, gets all done, and, and they move on to the auditors and all that. So oftentimes, what we'll do is, you know, we'll, we'll vote this, you know, and, but then we can come back, we can change it at any time. So what we have done sometimes, if we didn't have that enough business, you know, that had to be conducted at that time, we would just not hold that August 18th, and then just have it on another, either the week before or the week after. Because we usually only need one meeting date, unless there's something extraordinary that happens.
But to your point.
You know?
Going back to, trying to keep things sequential, am I? Is there a reason why we couldn't have the 23rd, at least the July 21st meeting via Zoom? And I know there's stuff that needs to be signed, could that be signed the next day? If, if anything needs to be signed? Yeah, so we could, we could hold it via Zoom.
I'm just trying to think of flexibility-wise. I know the summer months get really hectic, and depending on what's going on with negotiations, where we are with that. So that would be my recommendation, at least for the summer months, and do a Zoom, and have the community be able to access the Zoom, too, as well, versus us being in person.
That's actually, I like that part of it as well.
Trying to find that common ground for everybody.
Right. Because people are, some people do watch the YouTube, but I feel like there's more engagement over Zoom.
Right.
And the fact that there could be changes with COVID, or questions that come up, it might not be bad. I feel like Zoom was a good way to, like, involve the community a little bit more than what we typically get, so it might not be bad for the summer months, regardless of what exact day we do it.
I know, I know the importance of meeting live.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
But we absolutely get that. But we absolutely did have, I mean.
Great turnout.
We had, we had over, we had meetings with 50 to 100 people live. Unfortunately, once we finished talking COVID.
No, I know, I was just going to say that, yeah.
But I think if there's a way to keep the community.
11 now, yeah.
The community engaged. I mean, I, I know, like I said, um, having a TV where we could see, like, the people there.
Right.
The audience, because there's nobody here, that would be valuable, too, but I know it's more so for the audiovisual folks to have to figure that out. But trying to get that community involvement, I think, is key to the collaboration of where the school is going to go, I think it's key.
And, and to your point, we don't know what Dusty's going to put out for guidance. If, if it's just, hey, we're going back, and it's masks, that's a nice, easy, one-page, maybe one paragraph news line. If we're going into a start of the school year, a lot like we did for this school year, then we absolutely need to, myself and the principals, hold specific Zooms for, for parents in order to be able to have that discussion, because I can do the overview, but specifically what's happening in each building, that needs to come from the building principals, because recess is different, lunches different, passings different, but we're going to be optimistic that.
It's not going to happen. It's going to be wonderful. It's going to be normal and wonderful.
All right, so I'd like to make a motion that we, uh, do these school committee meetings as proposed on this paper that we have here. How do you want me to read this?
We make an motion to approve the school committee, um, meetings for 2021, 2022 as presented.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Now, the removal of trees. So I know this was brought up at the last meeting, and, um, I've definitely took a look at that, no problem at all to remove them, and it's my understanding there are three trees that are along the baseline of the baseball field here at the high school. Um, and I remember if, if it was at the last meeting, I believe.
Last meeting.
Monique, you were here for that discussion, I believe?
Yep.
For the, the trees?
Yes.
Yes, okay. Just want to make sure that, yep. So, um, it's absolutely no problem to remove them, and actually, I did speak with Jeff Collette, and, and they, they can be, they can take them down, so it won't even cost money to have a company come in and do it. So we do need, we just need the, um, school committee approval.
So I'm looking for a motion?
Move to approve the removal of trees along the baselines of the Douglas High School baseball field.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so next, we're moving to the School Business and Operations Managers Report.
Okay. So I don't have any transfers or reclasses this evening, but I do have, and I put it kind of separately on your, your desk, um, this evening, an agenda item summary regarding the FY 21 General Fund Budget Report, and also the budget report itself. So before I go over the, the agenda item summary with regard to the FY 21 General Fund Budget Report, at the very end, on the last page, just to go over this, um, so I take, as you can see, the way that it comes out of Munis, the total at the end includes the transportation budget, which is a separately voted born article, so I do minus that out to come down to our approved appropriation for our operating, school department operating budget. So at this time, we are 95.55% expended and encumbered, with an unencumbered balance of 613,928.46. And that's just the operating. And for transportation services, we have an unencumbered, um, budget as of the date of this report, which was actually run on 5/25, $306,073.30. But this gives all the, um, this is Munis General Fund Budget Report with all the details district-wide in each school, what we've expended, encumbered, and the balance left in each account. And you'll see that at least there are a whole ton of negatives, that's why we did all those transfers at the last meeting, I didn't want to give you a report that looked like that. So obviously, as, as we all know, this has been an unprecedented year, that's another word we don't want to hear anymore, right? To say the least. And the FY 21 budget was prepared and approved based on a normal school year, and it certainly has not been a normal school year. On that being said, there are some items that I want to outline with regard to the FY 21 General Fund Budget, and also its impact on the FY 22 overall school department operating budget. At the beginning of the school year, for instance, and you will see this in your General Fund Budget Report, we were posting all the school lunch salaries and wages to the general fund until revenue started coming in. And also, until we saw that the actual revenue, what it was going to be, because of all the things going on, like, with everything else. It was difficult to project with any certainty, as we know, we had hybrid, Cohort A, Cohort B, Cohort C, remote learners, things of that nature. In addition, we had school closings. As with most areas of the operating budget and revolving funds, I have utilized a more prospective outlook with regard to decisions pertaining to the use of general fund versus revolving funds and grants. The goal has been to have all funds end up as of June 30th, in a fairly good position to carry on into the next fiscal and school year. Now, that's not anything different than I do any other year, but again, the why I mentioned its impact on FY 22, is as you know, when we went through the FY 22 budget process, which is earlier, quite a bit earlier than when I even know what it's going to be as of June 30th, but I have a fairly good idea, um, because of, you know, yes, we, in some areas, we spent more money, um, and, for instance, putting more filters, you know, doing more filter changes, things of that nature, but in other areas, you save money. So all in all, I did take that into consideration, what I, as you can see, it is a larger ending, projected ending fund balance, um, this year than we normally have, and we did take that into consideration, I want to remind everyone and the public when we were preparing and approving our FY 22 budget, because in FY 22, we dramatically increased our use of school choice. So that was part of that whole discussion and decision-making process, um, so that we could get through, because, you know, we received a 1.5% increase to the appropriation from the town, but in order to fund our full operating costs to run the school department, as we, when we, as far as what we prepared in our budget, we did need to utilize more, more funds, along with the preschool, of course, and the athletic, and, um, and circuit breaker as well. One of the things I do need to tell you, too, that I didn't have in here, is that I just issued an IFB, and this is the first time this has ever happened to me, for the bleacher repairs for the middle school and the high school, and we had that budgeted in both schools you too, that I didn't have in here, is that I just issued an IFB, and this is the first time this has ever happened to me, for the bleacher repairs for the middle school and the high school, and we had that budgeted in both schools to do those repairs, and I did not receive one single bid. So I need to repost the whole thing, and I'm hoping that by the time, because of the posting requirements and timelines, it'll go into July. So even though it's both posted, it's in, a budgeted in the general fund right now, throughout the closing process of the year, we'll be paying for it out of school choice over the summertime, and I really do hope we get a proposal. So just, things are just so different these days. So that's one thing I wanted to let you know. Let's see. And also, I want to let you know too, that when Paul and I were speaking about and preparing the FY22 budget, we did meet with all the administrators and asked them to send me an email with what they can, you know, do without spending, you know, that they can project, and that was also incorporated in our FY22 budget process. So, you know, I expect us to be, to be in very good stead with all of our various accounts, whether it be school choice, preschool, those are the two major ones I bring to you at the end of the year, as far as a circuit breaker, you know, in case there's anything unexpected, and, uh, school choice as well. So we're so close to the end of the year, and of course, all salaries are encumbered. I don't expect any surprises. I didn't say that. Did I say that? No, I didn't say that, between now and June 30th. Uh, let's see. Oh, and another thing I want to do, just so that you don't, you don't alarm, you will see negative balances, say, for instance, in electricity and, and fuel oil, and I'm not covering those until the end of the year. Because I realized I was going to be having to do a lot of reclasses, we actually started paying the bills out of the general fund, so that, that saves a lot of work for Jean, because I knew that I had the funding available there. So just to let you know that. And here it says unexpended. I'm trying to think if there's anything else. Can you think of anything else extraordinary enough to speak of? But does anyone have any questions? Certainly, you can mull it over, you can read this for hours at night, and you can bring questions anytime. You know that I'm available anytime anyone has any questions anyway. Doesn't even, it doesn't have to be at a school committee meeting, you all know that. So.
Do we need to make a motion for this, Courtney?
No, no, just a report.
Wanted to make sure. Thank you so much, Courtney.
You're very welcome.
Any topics not anticipated that we need to discuss?
Can I just throw out there a big thank you to the PTO? They had the Walkathon today for the primary and elementary school, and the last I looked, they had raised over $17,000. So giant shout-out to the PTO, and to everybody who donated, and to the kids who walked or ran in the heat today. Awesome job.
Um, we're not going to do it in executive session tonight, correct? I'd be looking for a motion.
Return.
At?
8:11.
8:11.
So moved.
Second.